It's great to see so many people here tonight. It's my honor and my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's organizational meeting of the 2025-2027 Weathersfield Town Council. This meeting is called in accordance with Section 304 of the Town Charter, and the purpose of this meeting is to administer the oath of office to council members-elect and to elect a chairperson and vice-chairperson of the town council. This meeting is now called to order, and I will turn it over to Mayor Lesser.
Thank you, Sue, and good evening, everybody. It's so great to see all of you, and I'm excited to be here with all of you. And our first order of business is we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance by Josh Turner from Highcrest School, who is the Kid Governor of Highcrest School. So Josh, come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Josh. Josh outranks all of us, so he's the governor. Great job, Josh. Thank you. The next order of business is I have the pleasure of welcoming Reverend Elizabeth Cummins, the pastor of St. Paul's Evangelical Lutheran Church in Weathersfield. Pastor?
Let us pray. Blessed are you, O Lord, our God, ruler of the universe. You made the whole earth for your glory; all creation praises you. We lift our voices to join the songs of heaven and earth, of things seen and unseen. You stretched out the heavens like a tent; you divided the day from the night; you appointed times and seasons for work and rest, for tearing down and building up. You blessed your people through all generations and guided them in life and death: Abraham and Sarah, Moses and Miriam, Isaiah and all the prophets, Mary, mother of our Lord, Peter, James, John, and all the apostles, and all the saints and witnesses in your church of ages past, in whom your Spirit spoke and moved. We give you thanks, O God, for those who labor in the city council, and we ask you to bless the fruits of their work. Grant us faith to know your gracious purpose in all things, and continue your blessings to us through the bounty of your creation, through your Son Jesus Christ, our Savior and Lord, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. And next, we have Dr. Reza Mansour, cardiologist and president of the Muslim Coalition of Connecticut, to offer us a supplication.
Thank you. Good evening. I greet you with the Islamic greeting, Assalamu Alaikum, God's peace be with you all. Bismillah, Rahman, and Rahim, in God's name, the most forgiving and compassionate, the most merciful. Alhamdulillah, Rabbil Alameen, all praise is due to God, the Lord, cherisher and sustainer of the universe. When Prophet Muhammad, the Messenger of God, on whom be peace, taught us how to supplicate, he asked us to begin by putting life itself in perspective. First glorifying and praising our Creator and sustainer for the situations we are in, whatever that is, as every situation can be used to make ourselves better people and give back to the community. The same message as Jesus, the Messenger of God and the Messiah in Islam, gave to his disciples when asked, "What is the greatest commandment?", he said, "Love your Lord with all your heart and all your soul and all your mind. Love God totally." The second is like it: "Love your neighbor as yourself. Serve humanity," from the Gospel according to Matthew. Each of you has chosen to serve humanity, but never forget the words of God in all of what you do, which is to love Him, your Creator and sustainer, with all your heart while doing what you do. When I face very challenging situations, as a cardiologist down the road on Silas Dean Highway here in Weathersfield, I always begin with these words of grounding. I do it in God's name and ask for His guidance, trusting totally in Him and doing the best I can. So my prayer is short: Beloved God, Allah in Arabic, Allahha in Aramaic, the language of Jesus, Elohim in Hebrew, guide us all to do the work of service for your love. Accept our sacrifice in terms of time, effort, struggle, and commitment. As we grow gray and bald, I understand this is a feature of your stress-filled work as elected officials. Don't worry, I'm graying and balding too; I just cover it well. Accept all our efforts, O God, as a form of worship to you, and reward us as only you can with the satisfaction of serving humanity, and grant us your supreme pleasure. Ameen. Amen. So be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mansour. The next item on the agenda is our recognition of outgoing councilors, and we have two. One is Counselor Cindy Clancy, who is not here tonight, but we thank her for her service. It takes a lot. You give up a lot when you come to be in public service. We thank her for her service. And we also thank Counselor Emily Zambrello for doing a wonderful job for your service. Emily got married a few weeks ago. Congratulations again, and we are... We thank you for your service, Counselor Zambrello. Yeah, and the next item on the agenda is Sue is going to swear in the new council. So Sue, I think all of us, we come out front, correct?
Everyone, please step forward.
Can we not, you know?
Yes.
We will miss you.
Everyone, please raise your right hands. And you, Rich Bailey, Shelley Carbone, Mickey Durick, Ken Lesser, Jane Roats, Brianna Timbrow, Scott Wands, John, Tom Meyer, Matt Forrest, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut so long as you are awake and there are, and that will faithfully discharge a point to all of your duties as members of the Weathersfield Town Council to the best of your abilities and all the best.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I don't know where all the...
Thank you.
I'm just going to shuffle them all up and just... You can take mine, too, if you want.
I gotta move. Okay. Okay. The next order of business will be the selection by this council of a chairperson, who, under the Town Charter, will also be mayor. Is there a nomination in a second?
Yes. Good evening, friends, neighbors, and community members. I do have a privilege tonight, and probably the hardest job, which is to nominate Ken Lesser for the position of mayor of Weathersfield. Leadership isn't about titles and positions; it's about service, passion, and vision, and those three words perfectly describe Ken. For those of you who know Ken, I had to describe him in three words because he is all about three things. Over the years, we have all seen Ken dedicate countless hours to improving our town, from supporting local businesses and community programs to listening to compassion to the concerns of every resident. Ken understands that our town's strength lies in its people. Ken has a proven record of getting things done, whether it's improving infrastructure, supporting our schools, or fostering safer, cleaner community. Ken has always led with both heart and results. Weathersfield is a community with proud history, one built on dedication, civic pride, and neighborly spirit. As one of Connecticut's oldest towns, we have always valued leadership that honors our tradition while guiding us confidently towards the future. Ken embodies that very spirit. As we look towards the future, we need a leader who will make thoughtful decisions and who will ensure that Weathersfield continues to be a place we are proud to call home. It is with great pride and confidence that I nominate Ken Lesser to continue to serve as the mayor of Weathersfield. Thank you.
Good evening, Weathersfield. I am proud to second the nomination of Ken Lesser to once again serve as the mayor of Weathersfield. Many people have held the position of mayor in towns all across this country. Very few live the title of mayor like Ken does. Ken is literally everywhere across this town. His passion shows through his commitments to all of us as residents, and I personally am proud to work with a leader who puts himself second and puts us first.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote to elect Ken Lesser as chairperson of the party of the council chambers. Aye. Counselor Bailey?
Aye.
Counselor Carbone?
Aye.
Counselor Durick?
Aye.
Forrest?
Aye.
Wands?
Aye.
Counselor Weiner?
Aye.
Lesser?
Aye.
All voted aye. It's a unanimous decision. Congratulations.
Thank you. Do I do the remarks now? Do I make my remarks now? Yep?
Sure. Yep.
So, good evening, everybody. It's an honor for me to be your mayor, and let me start by thanking Mickey and John for those gracious words, and I really appreciate it. I want to say thank you to my wife Cindy and my daughter Lauren, who are here, and they've been a tremendous support. You can't do without family support; none of us can. And my daughter Rachel, who's in Washington, and my daughter Ally, who's in Italy. They're probably more fun places, but I thank them for their support as well. It has been an incredible honor to be mayor these last two years, and I'm so grateful to the residents of Weathersfield for giving me the chance to serve as mayor for another two years. I love this job, and I love this town. I want to congratulate all the councilors who will be joining me for the next two years. I want to welcome back Brianna, Shelley, Rich, Matthew, Jane, and Mickey, and I want to welcome John and Scott to the council. I'm so excited to be with all of you. We've accomplished a lot in the last two years. We've made a lot of progress. We passed the school referendum. We've had an extraordinary number of new businesses and business investments that have come to our town. We've made improvements to the senior center with more to come. We will soon be putting up red light and speed cameras, so be careful, but we all have to drive safer. It's important. We accomplish these things and much more with the help of our outstanding town employees. We have terrific, caring, hard-working employees, and an outstanding police and fire department. Our town is special, and what makes it so special is our residents. Everywhere I go, I see the kindness of our neighbors. I see the volunteer spirit of our community, and I see the immense pride everyone has for our town. I feel the heartbeat of our community when I meet with residents and when I go to events. Two years ago, I quoted my favorite president, Abraham Lincoln. Tonight, I will do the same. President Lincoln in his inaugural address of March 4, 1861, appealed to the better angels of our nature. Let's heed these words in Weathersfield and work together for the betterment of our town, and let's all do it out of mutual respect. I want to conclude with a story about two residents I met earlier this year. They're two boys, aged six to nine, and I carry with me the personal letters that they wrote to me. Probably see these. This one has a picture of a snowman on it, and I'm going to talk to you about that for a minute. These two boys wrote to me as they were inspired by scarecrows on Main. They love scarecrows on Main, and they came up with the idea of snowmen on Main. I met with them at Heirloom Market, the two of them and their mom, and they were so excited to tell me about their idea. So what did we do? What did I do? We put them on a committee with a bunch of old folks like me. The rest of them are younger, but like me. So these two young men have met with us, the town manager and other leaders in town, to share a little more about their ideas, and they actually brought in a PowerPoint presentation, and they did it, which was amazing. And we're working on implementing their visions. Matter of fact, we have a meeting with them tomorrow for snowmen on Main. I learned a lot from these two young boys, and as I said, we're working on their vision. And it reminds me that great ideas can come from anyone and anywhere, and it's a personal inspiration, as long as we're willing to listen and hear what our residents have, and that's what all, I know all of these councilors are going to do that. So I've been inspired by them and so many residents. Let me wrap up by saying thank you again, let you know how excited I am to continue this work, and how excited I am to work with the entire council here, and thank you, Weathersfield. Thank you very much. It is now my pleasure to ask for nominations for the position of Vice Chair or Deputy Mayor as unit. Do I have a nomination? Deputy Mayor Forrest. Or Deputy Mayor?
About to change pretty soon, though. Thank you so much, and good evening, colleagues, friends, and neighbors. It is my privilege tonight to nominate Jane Roats for the role of Deputy Mayor of Weathersfield. Many of you already know Jane's kindness, her openness, and her steady presence on this council. But what truly defines her is the way she brings people together. She reminds us that we are first and foremost a community. Jane holds a master's degree in marriage and family therapy from UConn and her undergraduate degree from Luther College. Her professional training is rooted in listening and really listening to people. She knows how to understand perspectives, how to encourage collaboration, and how to help groups find a path forward together. Jane and her husband Jeff have deep roots here. Jeff has been on the faculty at Weathersfield High School since I graduated in 1995. That's right. It's together. That one year. And when Jane moved to Old Weathersfield, she didn't just settle in; she became part of the fabric of this town. Her track record speaks for itself. In Tallinn, she founded the Parents/Student Action Committee, bringing families, educators, and students together. In Ellington, she created the Friends of Music, ensuring that every student could access music, performance, and the arts no matter their circumstances. Jane is also a wonderful singer, that I've heard, and performs in this town, which in itself is courageous. And the music teaches us to listen, to harmonize, and to make room for every voice, and that's exactly how Jane leads. On this council, Jane leads not by her volume or force, but by her steadiness, thoughtfulness, and genuine care for all around her. When tensions rise, she finds connection. When issues become complicated, she brings clarity. And when people need to be heard, she listens. If she has a superpower, it is this: Jane inspires and energizes people to come together to accomplish something positive. And that is exactly the kind of leadership the role of Deputy Mayor requires. So tonight, with confidence in her character and with gratitude for your service, I proudly nominate Jane Roats to serve as the next Deputy Mayor of the town of Weathersfield.
Thank you, Matthew. Well said. And for the purposes of a second, recognize Counselor Scott Wands.
I am honored to second the nomination of Jane Roats as Deputy Mayor. Her wisdom, leadership, and commitment to fostering a connected, respectful community for all of Weathersfield's residents, with strong lines of communication between town government and the public, is a model that I will strive to follow as a counselor myself. Jane literally wants to build a bigger table for all of Weathersfield's residents, to bring us together over a meal, over a cup of coffee, and foster conversation together. She's committed to making Weathersfield better and accessible for all, and I look forward to working alongside her on the council.
Thank you, Scott. So we have a nomination in a second. Are there any further nominations? Any further nominations? Sue, do you have to do the roll for this as you did? Yeah, I think you do.
Certainly. Okay. Mayor Lesser?
Aye.
Counselor Roats?
Aye.
Counselor Bailey?
Aye.
Counselor Carbone?
Aye.
Counselor Durick?
Aye.
Counselor Forrest?
Yes.
Counselor Timbrow?
Aye.
Counselor Wands?
Aye.
Counselor Weiner?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Deputy Mayor. We'll now entertain any remarks by our new Deputy Mayor. Deputy Mayor Roats.
Hey, that's quite an experience. I am honored to accept the nomination to serve as Deputy Mayor here in Weathersfield. To have the confidence of both the voters as well as my colleagues is truly humbling, and I will do my best to serve the community in the coming term. For me, the past two years have involved a steep learning curve. While I volunteered in many ways over my life, serving in elected office was never on the list of things that I would like to do. That being said, I've long believed that serving one's community is an important part of leading a full life, and when you're presented with the opportunity to impact positively on the lives of others, you take a deep breath and you say yes. To be perfectly honest, I did not anticipate running again, so when I did, many of my friends and family were surprised, for a moment, and then I told them why, I changed my mind and decided to run again. I chose to run again after recognizing a few things. One, after two years of listening and learning, experiencing some wins and some losses, I have an increased understanding of how I can, as a part of this council, continue to move Weathersfield in a positive direction. Two, I've had the opportunity to have numerous conversations with residents of all ages who've encouraged me to continue, sharing their stories, their wishes, their hopes and dreams for themselves and for this community. Some of those conversations took place as recently as this fall, as we were outdoor knocking and talking with people throughout town. One conversation in particular stuck with me and led me to reach out to Josh Turner, a fifth grader from Highcrest School, as you met earlier, and invite him to lead the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. When I stopped by his home and was chatting with his mom, Ally, she invited him to join us. He was running for Kid Governor of Highcrest, and she thought he might be interested in meeting a real-life politician. Josh told me about the essay that he was writing and had to deliver as a speech as part of the contest. He was passionate about his topic: climate change. I learned some new things and remembered some old ones, particularly that children are wise. Grown-ups sometimes forget the basic rules of life. A short conversation with a thoughtful young man reminded me of the many things we learn as children: be kind, clean up after yourself, share, take care of others, use your manners. That brief conversation reminded me of why I want to continue to serve. As a community, we want a lot of the same things: to be safe, cared for, fulfilled, to experience joy. It can feel like we've lost our way and have forgotten some of those basic rules, but I trust at my core that when we come together and really listen to each other, we find ways to solve problems and bridge gaps that ultimately serve everyone's needs. I recognize that while I will most certainly continue to make mistakes as I learn, I also bring an ability to listen and engage with people, and hope to use those skills to bring more people to the table as we work to make Weathersfield an even better place to live for everyone. Maya Angelou said, "Do the best you can until you know better; then, when you know better, do better." These are words I will continue to allow to guide me as we begin serving this new term on council. I'd like to thank the voters who elected me, my colleagues here on the dais, especially, and my family. My husband Jeff is here; my children are scattered all over the country, but they're cheering for me, as is my extended family. I want to thank them for encouraging me to be my most authentic self and to tell me to say yes when it feels like the right thing to do. So thank you again for your support, your trust in me. I look forward to the next two years.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Roats. The next item on the agenda is Counselor Comments. Any Counselor can make a comment this evening. Counselor Bailey?
To my daughter, my inspiration, thank you. Thank you for being there forever. And to my extended family, Kristen and Taylor, I don't see Taylor, but...
Oh, she's back there.
Thank you all for being here. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Bailey. Any other Counselor? Counselor Durick?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to cut my speech very short, and I'll tell you in a minute why. I just want to start by saying thank you, everyone, for your great support my first term of town council and for trusting me enough to run again and serve again this incredible community. I want to thank my family. This is one of the rare occasions that we can all make it together. I want to thank my wife, Leila, my daughters, Miriam and Myra, and my two sons, Hamza and Ahmed, who managed to sit still for 26 minutes. So I'm going to cut it short. I want to thank my sisters and their family, and my entire village, as I like to call them. Cindy Clancy and Emily Zambrello, I want to thank you so much for giving me the chance to learn from you and to be on the same team. I'm going to miss you a lot. I learned a lot from you. I do look forward to working with John and Scott and everybody else, but we truly had a really, really good two years, and you'll be missed a lot. Thank you, everyone, for all of your support.
Thank you, Counselor Durick. Further council comments? Yep. Anybody else? Further, Counselor Weiner? John?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Weathersfield. I am humbled by the opportunity to lead. Last election, running for the Board of Education, I didn't know what I was getting myself into. Now, two years and one school referendum later, I still couldn't have imagined in a million years that any of this would be me. Thank you all for your vote of confidence, and I will continue to work hard as your counselor. I am truly grateful for my family. Unfortunately, tonight, my wife and daughter are not here due to an ongoing family medical issue that required them to travel. Tina and Claire, hope you're watching on YouTube. I love you both. My son Eli is also home, hopefully doing his homework. I'd like to thank everyone who ran for council and Board of Education this election season. It's a lot of work to run for office. You should all be proud of yourselves, win or loss. I'm also grateful to my now former members of the Board of Education. I learned so much from you all. If I didn't have your support, I wouldn't have been able to make this move to council. Please keep working hard for education in Weathersfield, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you in a different capacity. Congratulations to Mayor Lesser and Deputy Mayor Jane Roats. I'm looking forward to working with you, but even more, I am looking forward to admiring your selfless leadership to our community. I also want to congratulate everyone else up here on the dais tonight. Counselors, civic leadership is an absolute honor. Embrace it. Let's make this community proud to have voted for all of us. Specifically, I have to give a special shout-out to now Counselor Scott Wands. Many of you may not know, Scott and I were two of the original officers of the Weathersfield Dad's Club and have known each other for quite some time. It's going to be an absolute honor to serve with you, my friend. Don't worry, I won't hold it against you for the next two years that I beat you by one vote. Finally, to the community, it shouldn't be overstated. We're all up here now to work for you. It's our jobs as leaders to communicate, listen, and engage with you. It's my promise that I will continue to do just that. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, Counselor Weiner, and I hope it's okay that we put the two of you together.
Wouldn't have it any other way. Time will tell.
Further remarks by councilors? Anybody? Counselor Forrest?
Thanks, Mayor. It goes without saying, of course...
Last election, running for the Board of Education, I didn't know what I was getting myself into. Now, two years and one school referendum later, I still couldn't have imagined in a million years that any of this would be me. Thank you all for your vote of confidence, and I will continue to work hard as your counselor. I am truly grateful for my family. Unfortunately, tonight, my wife and daughter are not here due to an ongoing family medical issue that required them to travel. Tina and Claire, hope you're watching on YouTube. I love you both. My son Eli is also home, hopefully doing his homework. I'd like to thank everyone who ran for council and Board of Education this election season. It's a lot of work to run for office. You should all be proud of yourselves, win or loss. I'm also grateful to my now former members of the Board of Education. I learned so much from you all. If I didn't have your support, I wouldn't have been able to make this move to council. Please keep working hard for education in Weathersfield, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you in a different capacity. Congratulations to Mayor Lesser and Deputy Mayor Jane Roats. I'm looking forward to working with you, but even more, I am looking forward to admiring your selfless leadership to our community. I also want to congratulate everyone else up here on the dais tonight. Counselors, civic leadership is an absolute honor. Embrace it. Let's make this community proud to have voted for all of us. Specifically, I have to give a special shout-out to now Counselor Scott Wans. Many of you may not know, Scott and I were two of the original officers of the Weathersfield Dads Club and have known each other for quite some time. It's going to be an absolute honor to serve with you, my friend. Don't worry, I won't hold it against you for the next two years that I beat you by one vote. Finally, to the community. It shouldn't be overstated. We're all up here now to work for you. It's our jobs as leaders to communicate, listen, and engage with you. It's my promise that I will continue to do just that. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, Counselor Weiner, and I hope it's okay that we put the two of you together.
Wouldn't have it any other way. Time will tell.
Further remarks by councilors? Anybody? Counselor Forrest?
Thanks, Mayor. It goes without saying, of course, that each one of our families dedicates a lot of their own time so that we can serve the public. Although this isn't my first rodeo, I am awestruck every time we go through the peaceful transition of this particular government and also the traditions that we have of passing the gavel, swearing everybody in, and it's a true honor to be up here with everyone, all of the fellow citizens of our town, all the fellow citizens that are watching on TV or in the audience. And it's really awe-inspiring for me, and it's a pleasure to be able to work on behalf of Weathersfield for our prosperity moving forward. And I can't wait to get to work. We've got a lot of great things coming up in the next two years that I just know that we are all going to be proud of, no matter what side of the political aisle we're on or how old that we are or as young as we are. Thank you very much, and thank you to Julianne and Grace, my wife Sarah, and my parents, David and Donna Forrest, who grew up on Clearfield Road and still support me to this very second about getting my kids to a hockey rink, and they couldn't be here today. So thank you so much, Mayor. Congratulations to you, Mayor Lesser. Congratulations to you, Deputy Mayor Roats. It's going to be a pleasure and honor to work with you both.
Thank you, Counselor Forrest. Thank you for your wonderful work as our Deputy Mayor in town, and your leadership is much appreciated. Thank you. Further council comments? Counselor Timbrow.
Thank you. So it's funny, my kids were not paying attention at all until everyone started talking, and now I see all their eyes and they're waving from the back, so I feel like it would be a big letdown if I didn't say something. Nothing like a little pressure. But no, I just wanted to thank all of the voters and the community. You know, being up here is truly an honor and a privilege, and it's challenging, and there's wins as well, and I really look forward to working with this new council. You know, I think that a lot goes on, but a lot of what we do, we do together. So I look forward to another two years. I love this community, and I do have to specifically thank my family, my husband Kevin, my son Elias, my daughter Gianna, and my other son Roman. And just a funny little thing, I know this doesn't fall under our purview, but my son Elias came home like two weeks ago, and he said, "You know, my friends, they really want you to win because they really want recess to be longer." So I said, "Well, that doesn't fall under the council, but I can put in a good word." So that's my good word. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Timbrow, and that's a great story. Recession's longer for any of you guys going on the Board of Ed. Thank you, Counselor Timbrow. Any other council comments? Counselor Wans?
Thank you, Mayor Lesser. I first want to thank the town for putting your faith and trust in me as a town counselor. It's not something I will take lightly. I promise you that I'll work hard every day to serve our community, listen to our needs and our concerns, and make good decisions that continue to move Weathersfield forward in the positive direction it's headed. I want to especially thank my wife Kristen and my daughter Annie for all of your support and encouragement for this whole journey and for sharing me and my time with the town that I love so much. I look forward to working with Mayor Lesser, to Deputy Mayor Roats, and to this entire council to continue to provide the town services that make us such a wonderful place to live and to raise a family while at the same time making sure that we're ensuring that living here is an affordable place for all of us. Again, I just want to thank you all, and I look forward to listening to and serving you in this new role, and thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wans. Welcome. Counselor...
Seriously?
Well, if you want, Counselor Carbone. It's up to you.
Sure.
Counselor Carbone.
The only time I wasn't going to say anything. Now I'm... Yes, thank you, everyone, for all of your support. It really does mean so much to us. I know how those missed dinners, the missed activities, all that stuff, it seems complicated and unfortunate sometimes, what we sacrifice because we want to serve the town. We do love the town, and thank you, and I do look forward to working with all of you, and I hope we can move some good, positive things forward for the town. And I appreciate that I'm kind of in the same spot. It's an honor to serve. It really is, and one that we don't take lightly. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor... Counselor Carbone. Anybody else for round two, second remarks? I'm just going to make an announcement, then we'll have our benediction. So tomorrow, we have a special Veterans Day ceremony at 11 o'clock at the high school, and I just want to let everybody know that it's been moved indoors because of the weather being expected to be pretty cold and windy, so it will be inside. And I think we're parking... That's a good question. We're parking on the entrance. We're going on the entrance located on J Street. So that's tomorrow at 11 o'clock. I hope to see some of you there.
The parking will be, if you head in the main entrance of the high school, you go to the right, and it's around by the tennis courts, all the way to the back by Catoon, and you're entering to the back end there.
Have you changed that?
I think that was changed, yeah. So it's now requested that we enter the campus through the student parking entrance located on J Street. Parking will be available directly ahead upon entering on J Street. Again, we will not be outside, which I think will be good. And now I have the pleasure to recognize Rabbi Allen Lefkowitz for our benediction tonight. Rabbi?
Thank you. Just honoring all of you for the roles that you've all taken on, and it's an honor to be Rabbi in this community. And just to extend an invitation, I've never been to TBT over on Main Street. You're certainly welcome to come visit us for a Friday night service. They're seven o'clock. I play guitar. We have a pretty good time, and we have people get up and dance. We have a really great time in bringing God into our lives. Story is told about a husband and wife who went to see a rabbi about a family dispute. The wife was angry and frustrated because there was only one thing in the house she asked her husband to do: take out the garbage. And he refused to do so because he was so busy reading scriptures. He would study Torah all the time, which isn't a bad thing to do. But the husband was insulted and horrified that she could be so insensitive to his learning. How could she expect him to leave the holiness of Bible study for the lowly job of taking out the garbage? They decided to let the rabbi decide who was right. They presented the case before the saintly rabbi, but he did not give them an answer. Instead, he said, "I'll have an answer for you later," and he sent them home without a resolution. That evening, as the wife finished dinner preparations and the husband sat immersed in his study, the garbage sat by the door. It was a stormy night, but suddenly, there was a knock at the door. The husband opened the door, and there stood the rabbi. "What are you doing here, Rabbi?" Asked the startling husband. "I'm here to take out your garbage," came the reply. The true sign of greatness is someone who is not too great for anything. All service to God is holy. All that you're doing, you need to consider is sacred and holy as well. Doing dishes so that other people can have clean plates, cups, and silverware is as well holy work. We need to be aware that all of our chores are holy chores. All that we do is for the sake of heaven. So as we take on our responsibilities and the roles that we have been chosen and the roles in which we have chosen to do, we serve God. We must be willing to get our hands dirty. No job is too mundane, and nothing is beneath our dignity because our actions serve a greater purpose. Our mission, for all of us, is to serve God. And we say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Rabbi. And I noticed my wife listening very intently when you were talking about the chores, and I know I'll be doing the garbage when I get home.
That's all right. My wife just broke her hand, so like the things that I'm doing now.
Yeah. So thank you, Rabbi. And I do want to make special mention again that we had a Reverend, an Imam, and a Rabbi speaks a lot for our community, and I appreciate you being here, and I appreciate that all are represented, and we represent and we work for all, and thank you, and thank you. I know Dr. Manzoor has left and Reverend Cummings has left, but we appreciate them being here.
Says a lot for the town.
Yes, thank you. At this point, I will take a motion adjourned unless you guys want to stay here, but does anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. And a second. All in favor, singing by saying aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.